Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the October 9th, 2018 Common Council Meeting, and the first order of business would be roll call.
Bartlet.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
Boersma.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Mieske.
Here.
Caravelo.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Wiesinger.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Duranik.
Here.
And Johnson is absent and excused.
Thank you very much. We have multiple communications and presentations tonight. We'll start out with the Innovation Grant from Utilities, and Assistant Utilities Director Hoops is going to give us an update on a grant that was written.
Cool.
So, earlier this year, the State of Wisconsin Energy Office announced that they were creating an Office of Energy Innovation Planning Grant. This grant is open to school districts, municipalities, and manufacturers throughout the state of Wisconsin, and it offers planning grants to help develop comprehensive energy plans and actionable strategies for achieving their energy goals. The City of Stoughton partnered with Fitchburg, Middleton, Manona, Sun Prairie, Marshall, and Wanakee, and together the seven municipalities submitted a grant application totaling $435,000 as part of a collaborative coalition. The grant was written for, like I said, $435,000, and sought to establish coalition that would meet together to discuss topics and projects, establish overall planning frameworks with the general objective to link common goals across the cities in Dane County. Each community has their own individual energy profile needs, so this grant would allow a central party to study each individual energy profile, create electric, heating, cooling, transportation, renewable energy, and storage needs for each municipality, and formulate strategies to address those challenges and those goals. The City of Stoughton, our goals in particular, as we participated in this, was to commit to use renewable resources for 25% of our electricity and transportation fuels by the year 2025. That goal was set by participating in the Energy Independent Communities Program, and that's for municipal facilities, including the park shelters, senior centers, city hall, public works building, et cetera. Along with that, the primary goal is to add solar to the existing parks buildings. We've taken the first step in doing so at the new Nordic Ridge Development, and the ultimate goal is to offset 100% of the electric usage at each individual park. Stoughton also wants to look at, like I said, the other city building energy usage and offset that usage as well with renewable energy. This grant would help evaluate each building to determine which are suitable for renewable energy installations, come up with load profiles to determine how much renewable energy could be installed at each location, as well as study what's needed to retrofit the existing buildings to accommodate that new renewable energy. And the third goal was to promote and increase the use of electric vehicles in the City of Stoughton. We've been promoting electric vehicles as an alternative to your traditional gas vehicles. We feel that it is a very reasonable transportation choice, because many of our residents are short commuters to Madison, and that falls well within the range that electric vehicles The reason to study that further, though, is to develop community electric vehicle charging locations, such as in downtown, to find the ideal locations that would be most beneficial to partners such as the Chamber and the area businesses, and to also come up with a comprehensive energy plan that allows us to have the structure, the distribution structure, to adequately provide reliable power to those locations, and to develop new rates, excuse me, rate structures that would offer charging at the lowest possible cost to the city. So with all that said, the seven communities applied for a total of $435,000 to be split between them all. The state awarded $200,000 to those seven communities. So, still a significant chunk of money that we can use to accomplish these goals. Our next step is going to be to begin meeting with these, with this coalition to develop plans on what can be trimmed and cut from the initial proposals, and still meet the majority of the goals for the plan. So, the awards was issued, or was announced last week. We anticipate that the coalition will be meeting, most likely by the end of the month, to start developing further proposals and plans on how this money will be spent. Once that occurs, the utility, the city, Rodney will start doing the analysis of the individual buildings, again, to develop a more comprehensive plan on how those funds will best be used.
Okay, thank you. The next update, if there is an update, is regarding STI. Did you have anything from the Attorney Dregny?
Not heard anything.
Okay. So we'll go right to the HATS update, and Alder Person Boersma is going to give us an update on the HATS organization.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a member of the Housing Advocacy Team of Stoughton, which is affectionately called HATS, and I'm also a member of the Housing Authority. We have, I'm here to report that we have received a substantial grant from the CDBG County Development Authority. We have tried for a grant to build some affordable housing for homeless people in Stoughton for a number of years. I think this is our fourth year going for monies to build a facility. I testified at a hearing in late September in support of this grant, which started off to be requested for $320,000, and it was cut down to $300,000. So, that county fund is going to be coming our way soon, and we're expecting to build a facility for some homeless people in the areas, either in Stoughton and in the area, sometime probably next year. We're going to be breaking ground. Of significance to the City Council is that a year or so ago, we designated funds in the amount of $15,000 to assist in this project and to partnership with this project. We are now moving forward with it. The grant was written by a person by the name of Kathy Kemp, who is from the Wisconsin Partnership for Housing Development. It is an extremely well-written grant request that we have. I have copies. If anybody wants a copy, I can make it available to you. We're real excited about this. Along with this, a number, a couple of years ago, we met with a school of Stoughton, a school administrator and a number of the school board, and one of the most significant needs in Stoughton that was identified was homelessness for Stoughton. We have a lot of kids who are doubling up, and a lot of families that are homeless. We had counted 42, I think, kids in school that had been homeless in the last few years. So it's a significant need. Just very briefly, what's going to happen is that START, which is the Stoughton Area Resource Team, is going to be having wraparound services to people who move into our project. It's going, we're using what's called the Housing First Model, where we provide housing for people before we provide services, and then provide ancillary services to folks. The setting is already, the land has already been purchased by Wisconsin Partnership for Housing Development. It's on Pine Street, which is right by Main Street, which is right across from the hotel or motel up on that street. So we're excited about this project. We trust that this thing is going to really improve the lot of life for a number of families in this area, and especially in Stoughton. We're hoping that we can help families get settled and based in a house, in a property that is going to be very attractive, and is going to help them get started in getting into more regular housing. So, any questions, feel free to talk to me. I'll keep you apprised. We hope this works well, so just wanted to let you know. I think that our involvement and our partnership with this proposal really made this thing work. Had we not received the support of the city, not sure that we would have been, we would have procured this grant. So, appreciate the City Council for having that kind of vision.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any communications from council members this evening? Alder Person Jensen?
Just wanted to thank Bob again, for all your hard work, your years of service.
Okay, that's going to take us to minutes and reports. The minutes from the committees are in the packet. We do have a status report regarding an excessive form, excessive force claim, and our Human Resource Director Gillingham is going to give us an update on that.
The City of Stoughton has received a civil lawsuit, which has been filed alleging that a police officer used excessive force. The city is being defended by legal counsel that's been appointed by the city's insurance provider, which would be CivMac. You'll be kept informed of any significant developments within the case. The city has budgeted a self-insurance retention amount of $25,000, and this is the amount that the city would be responsible for, so that is budgeted. Any inquiries regarding this matter should be directed to me, and the city has been advised by our attorney at this time to only say no comment at this time, as we are in litigation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a public comment period, and I have one person signed up for that, and she promised me it would be three minutes. No, I'm only kidding. It'll probably be a little longer, so bear with her. She says five. If the council is willing to extend that, we'd appreciate it, and that would be from Sharon Mason Boersma.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for letting me have this opportunity to come before you tonight. I passed out a lot of material. A Galenian magazine, just to look at, also information on the survey that I've, that I will speak about, as well as some, a little fake eyeglasses for vision, symbolic of what I'm talking about, and also information on pop-up shops. And I live at 243 East McKinley Street, Stoughton, Wisconsin, and my report tonight is called Vision: Looking at the Future. The purpose of my report is to reflect on the importance of a downtown for my children and grandchildren, besides myself and my husband. I decided before doing this that one of my legacies to my family was to help make Stoughton the best city possible and to live by standards of smart growth that could be beneficial for everyone. They both have bought homes, my children have, here, while being married and raising their own children. I decided to make a survey with questions for downtown business owners, managers, that had no right or wrong answers. Questions asked were, what is your vision for Stoughton, especially for families? What can be done to maintain that downtown is a vibrant attraction for tourists and residents? What creates this at present? What improvements could be made? What other cities have you admired that you may have visited? And last, what is your vision for Stoughton for one year, five years, and 10 years? I also had a separate survey of questions for two managers of businesses that closed within the last few years. Each survey was done face-to-face, with the exception of one who mailed in his response. 14 downtown business owners and managers participated in my survey, giving me their permission to use this information to summarize the responses to the City Council and to the Chamber of Commerce. In addition, I went to the City of Galena, Illinois, the Village of Mount Horeb and Baraboo, to learn more about their infrastructure regarding growth, attracting families, visitors, and challenges. A separate interview was also made with Michael Engelberger, local resident, who helped organize the Art Walk that the business owners felt was a huge success in the summer of 2017. You have detailed information in your packet on the findings, and I'm summarizing those findings tonight. I categorized the findings with downtown beautification. People want more green space for relaxing and conversing on comfortable benches. Build a river walk, a bike area for parking bikes. Flowers planted along Main Street, and even in Medians. No vacant buildings, and more of a variety of shops. Also, people unanimously wanted more events. So many business owners wanted more events and businesses to participate in the plan. That was the key, for the business owners to participate. They wanted them to be family-oriented, which was totally important. Then I categorized functionality. More public restrooms, not to go to the police department, the library, the bakery, or restaurants, and they wanted a place where anybody could go but didn't have to frequent a store. And to strive to have managers of businesses not park in front of their own stores. More transportation in general, and businesses built on the east side of Stoughton. Clean air is a problem for downtown, as well as big noisy trucks going down Main Street. They wanted more marketing, much more signage in the downtown area, also on the I-90 system, Highway N, Highway 51, and Highway 138 on billboards to say, "Shop in Stoughton, and this is why." In stores, a directory or magazine for the shoppers to know what stores are present in the downtown, their location, and goods and services, and that's my example for giving you the Galenian magazine tonight. Financial help. I have provided you information about pop-up shops, which have been created in Barocua and Baraboo. These are starter shops that assist financially to help businesses grow. Future planning. Many businesses expressed an interest of the importance of hiring an experienced Stoughton urban planner position, for looking at the vision for the present future study for smart growth and in-depth planning. Also, some businesses want to form a business association to develop ideas for events, to market them, and would like to have the camaraderie increased of partnership with each other. Assets for Stoughton, there are several. Stoughton Opera House, a gem. Other notable events, Ladies Night Out, gazebo music concerts, Sendai, Victorian Holiday, and the City Band are highlights. Preserving the history in Stoughton was mentioned, while capturing the river and even Lake Kaganza, which helps with the aesthetic beauty of our town. My trips to Galena, Illinois, Mount Horeb, and Baraboo were productive, to learn how they work at growing their towns. The city administrator of Galena, I had about a two-and-a-half-hour visit with him, which is a town of 3,000 but brings in weekly thousands of tourists from events, is a big industry there. They also have a business association which plans, which plans most of the events, and does need to be okayed by the city administrator. The Village of Mount Horeb hires a village administrator, a position that has been filled for 30 years. The goal, as told by the village administrator, is to work with revitalizing the downtown area. Schools are growing, and more affordable housing is being looked at for building. In addition, the Economic Development Corporation has taken the lead to get businesses to spur development. My time in Baraboo was spent talking to retail owners about pop-up shops. This helps prevent vacant stores in the downtown from happening by offering some financial help and support from other businesses for new starter businesses to open their doors to the public. After interviewing several business owners in downtown Stoughton, I heard so many comments on how the Art Walk was the best activity for attracting people to the downtown they had seen in years. Held in June of 2017, Mr. Engelberger, an organizer for it, said that it took a year to plan, but did a good job of collaborating with businesses and with the public. My conclusion. My conclusion is that the city administrator, business association, Economic Development Corporation, and pop-up shops have played a key role in moving forward more growth and development for downtown areas that I saw. Repeatedly, many owners, managers run clear about the role of the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce and stated that more communication is needed, not only with the Chamber but also with city government. My recommendation is to consider a committee or group to be formed to see how the information that I've presented tonight could be applicable for future growth. Vision is key to obtaining positive growth and development for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, Sharon. You're welcome.
Okay, we're still in public comment period. Nobody else has signed up, but if anybody else would like to speak, now would be a good time to do it. And seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A motion by Boersma.
I'll second.
And a second by Caravelo. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries, thank you. Old Business is Ordinance 22 of 2018. That comes from the Personnel Committee. That would be Alder Person Reeves.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance 22-2018, amending Sections 2-286, 2-287, and 74-4 of the Stoughton Municipal Code relating to the Utilities Director, and I so move.
Second.
It's a second by Duranik. Alder Person Reeves.
And we did talk about this a little bit last time, but essentially, and I should preface by saying Attorney Dregny did review this to make sure we were in line with the statutes, but this would, this would be in line with the way that the director has actually functioned and what the current job description says, so we're just trying to follow the right, and I think AJ's here if there's any further questions, and Attorney Dregny?
Alder Person Hirsch.
AJ, or, no. I guess, under Section 1, where it says, "The Utilities Director shall be appointed by the City Council upon the written recommendations of the Utilities Committee," I thought the Utilities Committee was HR that was taking over that responsibility.
We are asking that it runs through the Utilities Committee, but it would still follow the normal process of going through Personnel and then to Council at that point.
So it goes Personnel, then Utilities, and then Council?
No. Utilities would make the recommendation to Personnel. Personnel would then make the recommendation to Council. So that's the way it would happen under any other position. So what we're doing is just mirroring the way that all others' directors' positions work and function.
Okay. I just thought that HR was taking...
Yeah, they would make the recommendation to us, and/or HR can make the recommendation as well.
Okay. I just wanted to...
Yep. And that, just for clarification, the existing Utilities Director position reports to the Utilities Committee, and that's the change that we're making, is so that it reports to the mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments on this one? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries. R-169 of 2018 also comes from Personnel Alder Person Reeves.
Thank you. Resolution 169-2018, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the revised position description for the Utilities Director, and I so move.
Second.
A second by Alder Person Riley. Alder Person Reeves.
Well, and I think Director Gillingham could probably fill in some blanks, but we did review the current job description before it was to get, and made some revisions before it gets posted, and maybe you could talk a little bit about the timeline and the changes.
Alder Person Duranik, do you want to ask your question first, or would you like the overview?
Well, I see there's no pay grade.
Yeah, that's a misprint. It's a 23, same as it always has been.
Oh, okay.
So we'll add it in before we have Tim sign off.
Okay. And then I was also wondering, did you review Utility Director position descriptions from other communities with kind of similar sizes?
Yes, we did. We also had conversations with the utilities staff, and Sean Grady helped us with a lot of that information and the updates that we put into the description.
And the reason this is before you tonight is anytime by policy we make a change to a job description, it comes here on a leadership position. So that's why we're here tonight. Did you have anything else you wanted to cover?
Just the changes that we made, the first one being reporting to the mayor for consistency, as we have with all other job descriptions. And then, with that change taking place, we needed to change some of the verbiage throughout the position description itself, so that we remove the Utilities Committee and had the mayor in there. So those are a lot of the redline changes. In comparison with other cities, we did look at education requirements, and had multiple discussions with the existing utilities superintendent, so we made the changes there in regards to degrees and what we have for expectations in regards to education, training, and certifications.
Any questions or comments on this one? So, we have a motion on the table, we have to include the pay grade.
Yep. It'll be a 23, which is what it currently is rated.
Do we have to do anything for that, Matt? Do we need to amend it, or just add it?
Sir, I was distracted.
We didn't put the pay grade, which is 23.
23, it's not changing.
Yeah.
And it's not reflected in the job description?
Right.
Why don't you just approve the job description with that amendment, if that's typically in the job description?
Okay.
It is.
Okay. I move to amend, to include the pay grade to be a 23.
Correct.
I'll second.
All right. And there's a motion and a second. Any discussion on that amendment? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries. So that takes us to the original motion, which includes this amendment. Any more discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven is McFarland State Bank Property Donation. And we're going to get an update before we start the discussion from Attorney Dregny.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you know, we have been working with Bill Buckingham of Resource, REA is the name of the company, to do a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 environmental site assessment, and we have received the results of the Phase 2, which I'm looking for my notes here, so I can share those with you. One moment, please.
And the Phase 2 is in your packet, and Mike from McFarland State Bank is here as well, so if you have any questions, as we get into the discussion, he'll be more than happy to participate.
Sorry, I just had this in front of me. There we go. Okay. So, Phase 2 Environmental Site Assessment, the work focused on the parking lot area, because that's the only area that was really identified as needing some investigation. There was a gas station on that site for many years, so that was the focus of the work. There were soil borings taken, eight total soil borings taken across the whole parking lot area, and focusing on areas where the fuel pump, islands, and underground storage tanks, and the former garage had been located. There were, there was a slight exceedance of the residential direct contact screen level for diesel range organics at one of the soil borings, and the levels of petroleum volatile organic compounds at one of the soil borings slightly exceeded the soil-to-groundwater protection screen levels, but not the residential direct contact screening levels. There were no groundwater standards exceedances at the site, and the way both the environmental consultant and one of my colleagues who works in this area characterized the Phase 2 was that overall, the Phase 2 documented limited contamination at the site. The most likely, well, the next steps in the process are, once we're either authorized, once we're authorized to do so, we'll ask Bill Buckingham from Resource Engineering Associates to submit the Phase 2 to the DNR. Associates to submit the Phase 2 to the DNR, because there's a requirement to report this kind of a finding. I did actually call the bank's lawyer and asked if they had any objection to us doing that, but I didn't hear back from him yet, so we haven't done anything yet. The most likely response from the DNR, we think, based on my colleague's discussion, review of the assessment and discussion with our consultant, is that the DNR would issue a no further action required letter for the site, meaning no further investigation of contamination would be required and no remediation work would be required. Once a request, once a report like this is filed with the DNR, they have an obligation to issue a letter within 30 days indicating whether they're going to require further action or not, but they have 30 days to do that. Our consultant, Bill Buckingham, tells us that once the report is submitted, he could probably more quickly call the DNR and get a verbal response from them as to what action they're likely to recommend if we needed something more quickly. That's the most likely response from the DNR, however, though, is no further action is required. A less likely response from the DNR would be that some additional groundwater monitoring at the site would be required. If they were to order that, the DNR would probably require two additional groundwater monitoring wells for two to four rounds of sampling with a cost of up to $12,000. There's a very low percentage risk that the DNR would require remediation of this site, particularly given that it's just a parking lot, which essentially is a cap on the contaminated soil area. So that's the, that's what we learned, and that's our assessment of the Phase 2. I also included in the packet the title work we received, which we can talk about in a minute, but I just want to remind everyone where we are in the process. So we have a donation agreement in place. That agreement gives the city until October 15 to go through this process of gathering information and decide whether to continue with the transaction and accept the donation or to notify the bank that the city doesn't want to proceed. Or another option would be to say, ask the bank for more time if we feel that there's a need to gather more information or do any further due diligence. So with respect to the Phase 2, I think the city's options are to either proceed with the donation without regard to the results we have here. The report will be submitted to DNR, and the city would live with whatever the DNR says. Another option would be to say, no, we want to make sure there's a no further action letter issued before we proceed. If that's the direction the council wants to go, I think we probably need the bank to give us more time to agree to extend that October 15 deadline, because, as I said, we have not yet submitted the report, and they got 30 days after we do that to issue a letter, so that's not going to happen by October 15, which is less than a week from now. So that's kind of option, option two is ask the bank for more time. And option three would be to tell the bank, you know, you don't want to proceed at all, that you want to terminate the transaction. With respect to the title work, you all have a copy of the title work, and there is a restriction on the property that the council, I think, was previously made aware of. Property can't be used for a bank. Other than that, the exceptions on the title work are basically standard exceptions that, and I expect the bank would cooperate with us to remove as many of them as possible through, for example, an affidavit that there are no construction liens, things of that nature, but we would be taking the title at this point, subject to whatever exceptions we can't have removed through that process. We did not order a survey on this property. I think everyone's pretty familiar with the property, and I know Rodney can comment if he wants some, whether that's a problem, but there is no survey, so there's few exceptions, there are few exceptions that won't go away, but it's a pretty clean title commitment. So again, the city's options, and I think the decision the council needs to make tonight is, what direction to give me? Do you want me to simply proceed with accepting the donation at this point? Do you want me to tell the bank that the council would like additional time to pursue a no-action letter from the DNR? Or is there some other direction you want to go?
Okay. Let me just, one comment I want to make. Matt, wasn't there something in the title where it was a quitclaim versus something else?
Yeah, the...
We talked about that yesterday.
Yeah, the title, the commitment we have says the title company wants a warranty deed. We did contact them, and they said they would be willing to accept a quitclaim deed, which is what our agreement provides for, so they've indicated, and we have an email confirmation from the title company that they'll accept a quitclaim deed.
All right. I just wanted to make that clarification before we get into the questions. I had Alder Person Riley, and then Duransek.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. One, there's no, we hear from REA, should we have any questions right about the report? Is there a way to ask questions of them? There are several that I have. One, I would note on Page 1, towards the bottom of the parenthetical paragraph 1, it reads that "An attempt was made to collect a groundwater sample from Borring B1, but due to tight soil conditions was unsuccessful." I don't know if that's terribly significant or not, it's kind of, it's language that concerns me. How would we go about, well, let me say this, too. I absolutely, my feeling is, we ask for more time. I think it's foolhardy to do anything other than that, just my position on that, but in any event, how would we, Matt, go about trying to get a couple of questions answered with respect to some of the contents of the report?
Yeah. Well, technical questions like that, we're going to have to arrange for Mr. Buckingham to appear either in person or by phone to answer those questions, and I didn't ask him to be here tonight.
No, I understand that. Thank you. If I might follow, is it, is it something where he would welcome any council members getting in touch with him, or do we need to do it as a body? I'm just not sure what the protocol would be.
I would say to run it through the city attorney and his, you have somebody working with you in your firm that specializes in this area. And I can tell you about this particular one, the soil was compacted, and that's why he couldn't get to the water, because I was down there on site that day, and he mentioned that to me. That's about all I know about it, though.
But, okay, may I?
Yeah, sure. Keep going.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. But it's still a concern, right? I mean, I don't know. I don't know if there's anything there or not, but when you're talking about groundwater and there's some space that he wanted to test and he couldn't test it, it's, it may be nothing, obviously, but it's disconcerting, at least as far as I look at it as a layperson anyway, you know? And I have one more, and then I'll shut up for a while if I may.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
With respect to the title work...
Can I just respond to that one briefly?
Oh, yeah, please. No, thanks, thank you.
Okay, so, so we'll proceed however the council wants. You know, if there's a question like that, that you want an answer to, that I can, that I can be a conduit to get the answer, I'm happy to do that. If there's a decision you want, the consultant here, we'll make arrangements for that. With respect to that specific question, I'm not the expert, but my understanding is that he was able to do sampling that he felt was necessary to reach a determination about groundwater, came to the conclusion that there wasn't a groundwater issue to be concerned about.
Yeah, I think he pulled soil from that area.
Yeah. And so I think, I think that, and again, I'm not the expert on this, but I think that the significance of it is, we tried here and we couldn't make it work here, and so we, we did it somewhere else, and we were able to make it work. So I think they were able to state with some confidence that there isn't a groundwater contamination issue on-site. Rodney, would you have anything? Would that sound right to you?
That's along the conversation we had the other day.
Yeah. But, you know, if you want to hear directly from our consultant on that, then I can, I can work, I can find some way to do that with you.
And you had another one?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. With respect to the title work, are they giving us a gap? I mean, we're paying for it anyway, right? We're paying for the title...
We're paying for it, and if we want a gap, we'll get it ourselves if we want it.
Yeah. I would think it would make sense, even, I mean, again, the risk factor is, that means like virtually zero for those who don't speak that language, but in any event, yeah, I think it might be a good idea for us to do that.
Yep.
Okay. I had Alder Person Duransek, and then Hirsch.
Yes. I, I think that we should also delay this, especially till after our budget, and because this body actually has voted on two priorities. One, the majority of you would like to have this building, and also, the majority of you would like to see an implementation of the wage scale that was put before us. And I've been looking at the utility costs for this building, and what was presented to us, at least for electric and water, was $25,000 per year. And there was no wastewater or stormwater bills attached to that, and of course, there are charges for those. In addition, we would lose about $9,000 in taxes. So we're looking at a loss of about $34,000 if, in fact, we would go ahead with accepting this building, and this would be a recurring loss every year. And if, in fact, we have a priority of implementing the wage scale, then we could be using this, these funds to help implement the wage scale. And as it's been pointed out to us, we have a continuing tightening of the job market. It is more difficult to find good skilled professionals, and because we have such tight restrictions from the state, we have a very small margin that we can increase our taxes. So that means there is like increased medical costs, inflation, and also trying to be competitive in the job market. We are presently not competitive in the job market. We have a shrinking labor force, and we have been presented with a wage scale that needs to be implemented over many years. Now, the $34,000 is approximately 13% of what is needed to upgrade the staff pay. And so, from my perspective, implementing the staff pay, making sure we have good healthcare insurance, and that maybe we can actually hire some people at some point in the future, would be a much better use of these funds. Now, I know a lot of people have talked about space. Unfortunately, it's a lot of ideas and opinions, and it's not based on a recent comprehensive space need study done by a professional. We really need data. We need data that tells us what our needs are now and in five years. We need to look at the underutilized space, such as this room that we're meeting in. This is an underutilized space. So I think that as we take a look at this, we need to really think long and hard about our priorities. Is the wage scale a top priority? Is it a priority to become competitive so that we can attract people? Good people to stay here and to come? And as Greg Leck will tell us, when we had the last application for police officers, the applicants, the number of applicants was down, and that's an indication of what's going to continue to happen over the next several years as the baby boomers continue to leave the workforce, and we have this shrinking workforce. So I would actually like to see us delay this till at least after the budget, because we don't know how it impacts our budget.
Oh, my God.
We don't know what the $34,000 could do for us. So I would, I agree with Alder Person Riley. I would like to see this delayed.
Okay. Before I get to Alder Person Hirsch, I want to clarify a few things. As far as the $34,000, that's assuming that there is no additional revenues that are created by the, by the donation of the bank, which I believe that there will be revenues that are created by the acquisition of that bank that'll more than cover the $34,000. In fact, the $34,000, when you take something off the tax base, that doesn't mean we get less money. What it means is that the same amount of money we're taxing for continues, but it's spread out, so the current taxpayers have to pay slightly more to make up for it. So it's not money that is coming off our bottom line based on the spending cap. We still get to spend and tax for the same amount of money, it's just we have one less property that is being taxed in that money, so I think it's a little bit disingenuous to suggest that we're losing $24,000 worth of revenue off the tax base.
It's $9,000 for the taxes, and it's $25,000 for the utilities.
Okay. So the $9,000 for the taxes. The utilities, like I said, there's going to be revenues potentially that are created that'll more than cover that, and that's part of the whole plan here. I agree that we certainly, the compensation plan is a priority, but I don't really feel that this building is relevant in the conversation for next year's budget, and if anything, in future budget, this will be part of that answer, because we'll be able to create more revenues in the Opera House, and we all know that the Opera House is a significant part of our budget that the city subsidizes. The plan would be to expand the revenue opportunities for the Opera House that will more than offset the amount of money that you're concerned about here, and actually will more than likely help us address some of our compensation challenges, because it is a real challenge. We live it every day. Space is a challenge. Yeah, we haven't done a study, but really, all you have to do is visit the buildings, and you can see where people are double up in offices. City Hall is not efficient. It's, I mean, we're in the 21st century. That building is not designed in a way to be very customer-friendly or efficient for staff to work out of. There's several departments that space is an issue, storage is an issue, and I think it'll create opportunities to work more efficiently, which will also help us address some of the other challenges that we have within City Hall. So having said that, Alder Person Hirsch is next. Thanks for waiting.
What are you to steal my thunder? You hit all my points that I was going to make.
Sorry.
You've said more eloquently than I did, but I agree with you wholeheartedly. I think we are busting at the seams, and to even, say we save your, and I appreciate your financial aspect of it, Denise, and I really do, but I also look at what our staff is working in right now, and if five years down the way, we're really busting at the seams, this bank is no longer available, and we have to build somewhere, or it's going to cost us far more money, and it's, especially with, as Alder Person Mieske knows, with construction, construction costs are going up, way up. So it's foolhardy not to take a donation at this time, to even think about rejecting it. When we need space issues, we have problems with ADA compliance with City Hall. That place is accessible, it's a center of our city, it's a way to get people into our City Hall for our services and to understand what we all have to offer. I think you will see a great change in the community, because they'll feel like they're more welcome into City Hall. Second, again, we just heard from Brian Hoops that we have this grant to look at ways to reduce our utility costs through possible, you know, alternative energy means. We already had a nice company come to us wanting to donate, you know, possible alternative energy. I think we got to move forward, because we have all these opportunities that are just down the cusp to really cut our costs, but we still have, I mean, I'm all for, you know, looking at this compensation, but $34,000 isn't going to really, you know, help in the long run, based on what I've saw with those numbers. But it will help with retaining staff, so they come into and see that they have a nice office as opposed to sharing it with five other people or being smashed. I mean, quality of where you work and a nice surrounding also is a compensation for people to work with, too. So I would say, and with respect to Alder Person Riley, I looked at those results, okay, they have compacted soil, but they found other things. I'm not concerned about what they found. And I mean, it was all below what DNR says is the thing. And I mean, it was all below what DNR says is the thing, except for one number. And they said that that was basically, you know, minor, if we keep it as a parking lot. Again, even if the DNR doesn't give us that letter and we have to put $12,000 in to more monitoring things, $12,000 versus, again, a couple million to build a new building is peanuts in the big scheme of thing. I hate to have this bank walk away and, you know, offer it to somebody else and us lose out. So that's what I have to say.
Alder Person Borisma?
Yeah, I'm also concerned about the financial impact of acquiring a property that we're going to have expenses for. And I was intrigued when you were talking, Mr. Mayor, about what we can, what kind of compensation will be coming our way if we acquire this property. And then my second part of this is that, and I think we've heard it tonight and other times, too, about the need for parking in the city. And we need parking in this city as well. But I am mostly intrigued about where are you expecting, is that because we're going to be renting out some space in this property or what?
Well, we could potentially be leasing out some space, and then we would also potentially be expanding the Opera House. Right now, their sole source of revenue is ticket sales. And I believe that there's a lot of money that are walking out of the Opera House that could be spent there on gifts or concessions or meet and greets with the entertainers, which is really becoming as popular as the shows themselves and as profitable as the shows themselves. Based on other venues that I've been to and other shows that I've gone to, I've seen this firsthand that, you know, there's great opportunity there for revenue. And I know, talking to the Opera House director, he's really excited about the possibilities.
So the bank would not be paying for space, or would they be paying for space and utilities?
We haven't sat down with the bank. We can't do that until this transaction is completed.
What's your best hunch?
I'm hopeful that we will work out an agreement for them to become a tenant. If not, maybe somebody else. But I think that's a good problem for us to have. I think that's a desirable location for any number of businesses.
So it sounds as if you're under a position that it's not going to, it's going to produce more money than it expends.
That's my belief.
The key word is belief. No data.
Alder Person Hirsch, or, I'm sorry, Reeves?
So I will tell you, I've had a lot of, I've had a lot of positive feedback from people who are excited about the prospect of expanding the Opera House. I do have a lot of conversations with young people, some who said that they don't go because we have an outdated venue in terms of, they like that opportunity to meet and talk with the artists and buy their stuff. And right now, they are crammed into a closet. It's not welcoming. They might get a glimpse of them. So it's just, it is an outdated venue that can't compete with the other opportunities that young people have, quite frankly. And I think that we are expecting people to come and spend money in an environment that's just not up to snuff with what other venues offer. And I, you know, my daughter's one, she said, I don't go there. I drive up to Madison because there's no opportunity for that sort of up close and personal meet and greet with, you know, with the artists. And quite frankly, I mean, they are, concessions is a part of it. You know, I was downtown the night of a show, they flooded out of there. You would have thought they were giving out $100 bills. And quite honestly, they ran across the street and were ordering, you know, drinks like, you know, like crazy. Now, we may or may not choose to do that, but I can tell you that there's a market for people that, you know, during intermission, and they probably relate to the show. So I think before we, you know, make a judgment call about, you know, this sort of thing, I think it'd be good to have a conversation with Bill, too, if you're on the fence about it. I think that he feels like we could, that the Opera House could benefit a lot. I did want to ask, though, in terms of the worst-case scenario, did you say the?
In terms of the?
Like if the DNR says, Hoops, you need to do something.
Yeah. The worst-case scenario appears to be additional monitoring with a cost of about $12,000.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Alder Person Riley?
Thank you, Mayor. One, I love this building, actually. I think it's a really nifty building. I've always loved it. It's very cool. It's very Frank Lloyd Wrighty. I also like the thought of being able to do some more things at the Opera House to generate additional revenue. I don't know what type of remodeling or capital improvements that would require. I haven't any idea if that's been looked at, but I like that idea a lot, too. What's concerning me the most still, right now, anyway, taking into consideration also ultimate concerns is, why don't we get this DNR report? It's 30 days out. Why wouldn't the bank give us 30 days to get it? I understand, and Regina knows far more about this than I do, so I appreciate that, too. I understand that she doesn't have concerns, given what she's read in the report, but why have an unknown before we acquire this building as to what the DNR may or may not ask us to do? I just think it makes sense to find that out, and I would think the bank would accommodate that request for, just to get the DNR info, anyway.
Okay. Alder Person Hirsch, and then Jensen.
I just want to respond to Alder Person Riley. The reason why I don't think it's necessary, I mean, yes, we're going to get the DNR report, but whether they give us the worst-case scenario or the best-case scenario, how is that really going to change our position? If it's the worst-case scenario and we have to monitor for $12,000, yes, it adds on to the overall cost, but it's still far less than a million or $2,000 if we have to acquire another building or build another building or modify another building just to accommodate our staff needs. Because as even Alder Person Dransik says, our staff is growing. As our city grows, we're going to have to hire more people. If we don't have space for them, and I can't imagine fixing this up to put office space in here when you have courts and cases and council meetings in here. But yeah, there might be other space needs, but it's also about efficiency. You can put the people in different pockets of rooms throughout the city, but is that efficient to work together for the public to be able to find people? Efficiency also means being in one place where people can be serviced in one area as opposed to, oh, you want to find Rodney? Well, go down 10 blocks, go find this little hole in this building, because that's where we found an office for. That's not efficient. So I like us being contained, majority of the people that have services for the public contained in one building, so it's welcoming to our community.
I had Alder Person Jensen, and then Riley and Dransik.
Okay. Well, Regina made my point. Thank you.
Okay. Did you have another one?
Yes, I do. To get things going, I'm going to make a motion to accept the donation.
Second, which I would interpret to mean to move forward with accepting the donation without any delay.
Yes, to move forward without delay.
Okay. So that's been moved and seconded, is that correct?
Yeah, seconded by Mieske.
Can I just?
Sure. Do you want to do some wordage, or what do you want to do?
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure, you know, when I talk about worst-case scenario, I just want to make sure that's our best judgment as to the likely worst case. Of course, we don't know for certain what's going to happen. We can't predict for certain what's going to happen. What my colleague has told me is that there is a very low percentage risk that the DNR would require remediation of the site. But again, in terms of, our judgment is the most likely thing the DNR will do is issue a no further action required letter. A less likely response from the DNR is they want some more testing, which we think would be about a $12,000 expense. And again, a very low percentage risk that they would say the city needs to get in there and remediate contamination, meaning remove contaminated soils. And so I just want to make sure I'm clear about that, because I don't want something unexpected to happen and people to ask, gee, why didn't you tell us? So that's the, our risk assessment.
Okay. I have Alder Person Riley was next.
Thank you, Mayor. With respect to Alder Person Hirsch's comments, I don't disagree with any of them at all. But I think that you're positing this as an all or nothing at all at this point, when I would think, again, you're presupposing the bank will say, no, we're not going to give you enough time to see what the DNR says. And I refuse to believe that the bank's going to be that unreasonable. I mean, I don't know if there's any way to determine that tonight or not, but I just, I just can't imagine them doing that. I could be wrong. And I have to confess, counsel, that was one of the things I was going to bring up, that you are the one who's giving us the worst-case scenario, but you're a fine attorney. You're not a scientist, I don't think. So I realize you're relying on information people. That's a bit glib, but you know what I mean? That was one of my concerns, too, is that I don't know what the worst-case scenario is. I have no reason to believe it's something drastic at all, but I just think, you know, it's reasonable to endeavor to explore, at least to get the DNR info, and not unreasonable to say the bank, hey, give us 30 days to get the DNR letter. That would be my great preference, honestly.
All right. Alder Person Dransik is up.
Yeah. I hear a lot of assumptions about space here, and people are not professionals or experts in the area. I'd like to give you an example. In 2007, the, our library did a space need study that said that we were 10,000 square feet, too small for the size of our community. And of course, we came to the city council, we asked for expansion, and it was going to be too expensive. So what have we done over the last 10 years is we've optimized the space that we have. And for those of you who use a library, I think that you can go in there and you can see the things that we have done over the last 10 years to optimize the space. We're still 10,000 square feet, too small for the community, and yes, we still do have some problems. But we have a well-organized space, and that's what a professional would do for us, rather than all of these ideas and opinions and assumptions. I'm sorry, folks. I'm really kind of disappointed that using data and using a professional could give us what we want without taking on the burden of another building. I love the building, too. It's beautiful. But we already own seven buildings. We have hundreds of acres of land in parks. 14% of our existing land use is in right-of-way. Those are tremendous infrastructure costs, and you will see it in the CIP and you'll see it in the budget. And yes, I do have concerns about continuing to add to those infrastructure costs. And maybe I'm a little too conservative for this council. But guess what? We have to use what we have and optimize it. And I don't see that that is happening here. It's just easier, yeah, to take a free gift, which is nice, but we also have the burden of maintaining it. And again, there is a belief that we will be able, and again, it was just a belief, that we'll be able to offset the costs. So that's my piece.
And Alder Person Borisma?
I'm hearing everybody's comments, and I think they're all legitimate, actually. The, what I'm concerned about, and I think we do this every year to some extent, just out of a necessity, we sort of are talking about budgetary issues before the budget. We don't, you know, we don't really know what are we going to do for our budget, and we're engaging in kind of a budgetary thing right now. Can we afford it? Can't we afford it? The one thing that I would be concerned about would be that we do something like we did with the Public Works Building, which is we need space and we build for millions and millions of dollars. I think if we really look at where our money should be going, it's probably not to buy land and put a big structure up for additional housing if we can get it for cheaper. So that's part of my fiscal conservatism, is look at, are we getting the bank for the buck, and how much is it going to cost us to acquire the bank? You know, I just, I'm concerned also that we're in a budgetary process, and I frankly, just as one councilperson, don't know what we can afford and what we can't afford right now. It's just like, I know we're tight, but how tight we are, I'm not sure. I am intrigued, again, about this particular property, giving us both direct money through leases or whatever, and also potentially to improve the amount that we're getting from, like, the Opera House. I'm also concerned about that the Opera House takes over the whole municipal building. I don't think that that's proper. So I will certainly have some stuff to say about that, because I don't think that the Opera House should, that the municipal building should turn into a huge grand glorified Opera House. I think that there are other needs for that property other than just the Opera House, so...
Alder Person Bartlet?
Yeah, I'm going to support the donation of the building. I think it's a good, low-cost alternative to help meet our needs for the near-term future. And I would say I'm not too concerned about the groundwater. There was one point where they couldn't find, get the groundwater contaminant determined, but there were seven others that they were able to take samples on, including where the tanks were at, and those showed minimal contamination. So I'm comfortable with the conclusion, we paid for a professional engineer to give us an opinion and a summary, and he did, and doesn't think there'll be any further investigation warranted, doesn't think any contamination's an issue. So I think we paid for that professional opinion on that, so I'm going to go with that. So I'm not too concerned about the summary they've given us on the minor contamination, as long as we keep it capped with the parking lot, which I think we plan to do. And I think we definitely need the new building. There are space issues. I'm not an expert in it, but you go in there and people are sharing desks. You can see it. When they have opera, they're prepping for the opera stuff. There's people wandering around city offices. They just don't know where to go. And in and out, there's no security in the building. I think for security and safety, we need some better alternative that we can lock doors and monitor people coming and going, having someone out front to meet them and help them, assist them, get to where they need to go. You go in there lots of times now, people are just wandering around, they don't know where to go. So I think that'd be a good service to have. I also like the idea of the additional room, possibly having a full-time spot for the food pantry. We could expand some of the city services. It would help take up some additional space in the new building. And I've also heard a demand, that there's a lot of high demand for additional public meeting space that's not being met in the city. And I think part of these, in the basement, there were some good meeting rooms that I think would meet some of that. And yeah, and if we can bring additional revenue with the Opera House. So I don't think it's an either-or, but the benefits, the benefits and meeting the compensation plan, I think, is a priority, but I don't think this is going to impact it that much. So I'm going to support the donation.
Alder Person Riley?
Thank you. I'm just, I don't mean to place this person on the spot, but is the bank some representative willing or able to speak at all to the potential for giving us additional time to get the DNR letter? I'd be, and I apologize for putting you on the spot in that regard, but...
No, I've been waiting for an answer. I was waiting for the question. So what I would tell you, the concern that we have, and one of the things that we were trying to look at from our lawyer, and why we didn't get back to you, is we didn't get our research done. The worry that I have is you don't accept the agreement, we make the, you send the letter to DNR, well, it's technically our responsibility now. So I think the discussion was, we're going to donate the, both sites as-is, and we'll see where things are. So granting time doesn't solve the issue of where the liability lies, so we would have to do that research. So that would just be my comments to that.
I understand. Thanks. So if I...
Sure.
Okay. So if I may try and summarize what I think I'm hearing, basically that somebody's stuck, if it's ugly, somebody's stuck with it. And since you're donating it, the thought is, well, you know, we're giving this to you. Would that be kind of a fair summation?
I don't like to use the word, who's going to be stuck with it, right? I mean, I think it's...
I like it. Okay.
But, you know, I think that's kind of where we're at. We're going to have to, we're going to have to do some research to see where the liability lies, essentially, and so...
That can tell you where it lies. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, so with the pending motion, if the pending motion is adopted, then my understanding of the direction, to me, would be that we... of the direction, to me, would be that we would notify the bank, we are moving forward, we're going to close this transaction.
Yeah.
We will take title to the property.
Yep.
I would also then, without even waiting for a bank's approval, I would send that report to the DNR and say, let's get that process started. And then, you know, by the time the DNR gets back to us, we, we'll probably own the property.
Right.
And you're okay with that, right? If it goes that way.
Of course, he's okay.
So, what I heard from the, from the representative of the bank is their concern is, if they give us more time so we can submit the report, and then we get a letter back that says, well, there's more work to do, now the bank has probably the obligation to, to deal with that, or they might, unless the city says, oh, don't worry about it, we'll, we'll still move forward. So.
I get it.
It's the dance that
Right.
we're doing.
Yep, exactly.
All the person Borisma?
So, we are engaging in some budgetary issues. Where, where, where do we get the money to, to acquire the property? I mean, do we have it? Do we have it in our, in the, the city coffers to be able to make up for the expense and potentially the, the money that would go for additional monitoring?
Well, we've, do you want to answer it, or I can answer it? Go ahead.
Where we would have to take it from probably is undesignated fund balance, because we've pretty much used up our contingency fund at this point. And that's where we get our contingency from anyway, is the undesignated fund balance. And we have a pretty healthy undesignated fund balance, so a lot of these costs that we are going to incur, you know, because we are going to be covering their attorney's fees, the title stuff, and our own attorney's fees, and closing costs. So, yeah, there's going to be, you know, costs that we're going to have to, have to cover, and that's where I would anticipate we would get the money from, if, if it comes before the end of the year.
That was my answer.
Oh, good.
Okay, I have, Council President Mieski.
Call the question.
Second. Okay, so there's a second to call the question, that takes two-thirds vote, as I recall.
No discussion.
And no discussion. So, all in favor of calling the questions, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, so that carries. So then, it takes us back to the motion. If it would have been closed, we could have done a roll call.
I, I thought it was a roll call to begin with, but.
So, we're, we're back to the motion, and the discussion is closed. So, do you have the language of the motion, or how did we?
What I have is to move forward with the donation agreement without the DNR, without filing, or, without the DNR report, I don't know if that's.
Yeah, the intent was without waiting for a response from the DNR as to whether there's, what, if anything, they're going to require be done.
You see, move forward.
Just move forward, I interpret the motion, just to direct me to close the transaction, meaning the city will take title to the property in its current condition, as-is. Yep, I think everyone understands that.
Okay.
Question, are we going on roll call then?
We can, if you'd like.
I'd rather.
Okay, so we'll, we'll go by roll call as soon as Holly's ready.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Riley?
Pass.
Borisma?
Present.
Just kidding.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mieski?
Aye.
Caravelo?
No.
Jensen?
Aye.
Weesinger?
Aye.
O'Connor?
No.
Duransik?
No.
Bartlet? Riley?
Can I inquire as to what the vote is at present?
Um, there are three noes, and six yeses.
And two abstentions, is that what you were?
He passed, so we're going back to him.
I never heard of that. First time I've seen that.
So, it's six, three, aye right now, I'm sorry, is that right, Harley?
Yeah.
Solely because of the DNR issue, I'm going to vote no.
And then, you, you're abstaining, or present, so you're abstaining?
Feel very special.
Okay.
Um.
One discussion?
I'm, I'm going to go, go to aye.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
I will go to aye, I'll change my vote to aye.
Seven ayes and four noes.
Okay, so that motion carries, that was a good discussion, and.
We change your vote.
Congratulations, we now have another building.
You will soon.
Soon as the title work is done. That takes us to R 170 of 2018, and that comes from the Finance Committee.
Yes, the Finance Committee met on September 25th, and recommends counsel approve R 170 2018, approving a pre-annexation agreement between the City of Stoughton and RHD Properties LLC, and I so move.
Second. There's a motion and a second, all the person Duransik?
I think, Rodney is here, and he can answer any questions. I think that you should probably point out some of the differences that you pointed out at, at Finance for this.
Yeah, the agreement outlines expectations and expenses, and how costs would be allocated in the event the annexation ordinance is passed. The annexation ordinance is before you tonight as a first reading, the second reading would occur conceivably at the next council meeting. If it's, if it does not pass, this agreement would be not in place, but if it does become an effective annexation, this agreement again outlines those expenses. Some of the expenses that we discussed as part of the Finance Committee action was related to, in, in the case of how bills would be received, if there's any deposits that are necessary to make sure the cities remain, made whole on actions associated with the development, costs, rezoning, urban service area amendments, things like that that might come along as this property's considered for development.
Are there any questions or comments, all the person Hirsch?
We're on the number eight, right? And I was
Yep.
curious to see who voted no, and the reason.
Tass voted no.
Tass voted no.
Okay, and was there a reason for the no? I mean, I'm just trying to get the whole picture of what was presented, of why.
The reason she voted no, from what I can, from, I remember her comment, was that she didn't understand why we needed to annex more property. And so, she voted no against it.
Okay, there you go.
Did I?
Did you have any follow-up to that, or?
No, I mean, I'm just looking at the map, this is, it's across from.
It's on two sides of Highway 51. I can, I can put the map, I can put the map up.
Parcel one is, is huge, it's not broken up into other parcels. It goes, there's three sections to the parcel one.
Yeah, Rodney will explain it, and the relationship between the townships. You may remember, this is all in our comprehensive plan that we just updated last year, so it's, shouldn't be too surprising that sooner or later that this would come to us. And we'll get this up on the screen.
I do, I do want to just relate to you, one of my concerns that I, I stated at Finance, basically, there's a number of single-family homes, some in Stoughton and some in Dunkirk, and so, I requested that Planning Commission be very sensitive to that when they start making recommendations about zoning, because there's a, this is a mixed, I forget, is mixed-use, and there's, there's kind of a wide range of things that can go into these properties. And so, you know, I think that we want to be, you know, very cognizant of what we're putting next to those single-family homes there. We're on the other side of the highway, you know, most of that in, through theirs, you know, there isn't much there, so, you know, I just pointed that out as a concern and something they needed to be mindful of.
Go ahead, Rodney.
Yeah, actually, the next item is the first reading on the annexation ordinance, but this is certainly the time and appropriate discussion. This petition area is defined by Highway 51 bisecting the property that was formerly known as the Grand Root Farm. Areas on the west side of Highway 51 are principally tillable acreage, actually, I believe almost all of it is tillable acreage. There was a homestead that was located approximately here, since been removed, and then there's tillable acreage on the other side of Highway 51, both on the north and south side of Velkman Way. So, that, that is the balance of the Grand Root Farm, as we understood it to be part of the petition. They are also proposing to annex the right-of-way of Highway 51 from Robey Road essentially, north, to essentially clean up this, this area. And this is a unanimous direct petition, and therefore, there are no residents on the property, and the owner is making the request as, as the owner.
Could you, could you explain, you said that they're going to annex into Highway 51, what do you mean by that?
They're annexed, this annex is the right-of-way. So, just to give you a little orientation, this property right here on the very north side is Taco Bell. The frontage of Highway. It's both, actually.
Oh, is it? Oh.
So, from that point south to about Robey Road, the Highway 51 right-of-way wasn't within the city limits, however, those properties are in the city. This actually adds the right-of-way of Highway 51 to this city limits as well.
Okay. Um, question.
Sure.
Like, on Deer Point Road, where in Stoughton East Hardwood, that's not in, that's not annexed in yet, is it?
No, it's not, and, and I can elaborate on that. So, on the south side of the page, here at the bottom of the page, this hashed mark actually represents the northern property line of the Kettle Park West area annexation. Kettle Park West lands are here, some of the dealerships are about here, these properties in the middle, yet remain in the town of Rutland. Just for a little education opportunity, four townships come together right here at this intersection. We explained this last night to the Planning Commission, to the north and west is Dunn, to the south and west is Rutland, to the south and east is Dunkirk, to the north and east is Pleasant Springs. So, some of this is in the town of Dunkirk right now, and the larger tract of land is in the town of Rutland.
Does the annexation have any impact on our ability to get the intersection of 51 and Robey Road safer and fixed?
Um, no, actually, I think, go to segue, the DOT is planning to do the roundabout at Highway 51 and Robey Road in 2021. We're anticipating a public informational meeting in November on that, details yet to come. So, that's in the works irrespective of whether this property's annexed or not.
And just to note, we do have the attorney here for, for RHD as well, if you have any questions for him. All the person Hirsch, go ahead.
Are they going to ask for access in, off of 51, or are they going to extend the, kind of the, the frontage road in? I'm just trying to think, are we going to have a problem again with how many, whether DOT is going to allow access into the, that property, and
Yeah.
that whole problem that we are currently, or just got permission with?
DOT will regulate how access is obtained or not obtained on Highway 51 in this section, whether it's in the town or in the city. I'd, I'd anticipate there being an emphasis to try to have Rutland Downtown Line Road be one of the primary access points, along with Robey Road and Deer Point at this point. I don't know that there will be another access point that would be allowable by the DOT in that section.
I was just hoping not to create another hazard on 51 by having another intersection.
I, I would suggest to you that if the city, if the property's within the city limits, we then have the opportunity to work through those development questions, probably a little easier than if the properties were somehow developed in the town setting.
All the person Caravelo?
And, at Planning last night, I know, included in the information was a, a letter from the town of Dunkirk, objecting to the annexation, and I think their two points were questioning the future of Velkman Way, whether it would be, whether it would continue to exist, which I know you answered at Planning last night, that there is no reason to believe that anything is going to happen to that road, because we can't really make those, you know, leave those folks in, in Eggleson's Woods kind of marooned out there, without any access to get out of their properties. And also, another concern that they had was what Denise brought up about, basically, the quality of life of those folks that are in Eggleson's Woods right now, being impacted with, with, we don't know what development will happen out there, you know, light intrusion, noise, who knows, since we just don't know what's going to be, you know, not that they're, you know, they're not in the City of Stoughton, but we don't know what's going to be in the backyard of those folks.
But the neighbors to the south are in City of Stoughton, so
Yeah.
so again, we do have those folks to consider.
Well, I think, you know, Rodney could probably answer that, but my understanding would be is, there's a process that we have to go through, and maybe, just walk us through that.
Yeah, certainly, we're, we're not considering any development scenario right now, nothing specific. Zoning regulations have standards within, in the city, city zoning standards have buffer yard requirements, and standards related to the adjacency of zoning districts, so there are some considerations of how the area would be developed most closely to some of these residential uses. So, I think we have some tools in our arsenal to help consider that, but ultimately, the city has to be a partner in the development to see if it's going to be something the community wants, so we have that opportunity to review that. The other question related to access to the, the Velkman Way, I, I don't know that Velkman Way would ever discontinue, certainly, as you spoke, these properties have to have access in some manner. It may not always be a straight shot to 51. Their, Nygaard Street runs north, north to Taco Bell KFC right now and terminates. There may be some logic in having this extend to the north, and Velkman Way being discontinuous to 51 directly at that point, but nonetheless, there has to be access to these residential properties in some manner. That, I think our comprehensive plan contemplates this extending to the north, there being some type of intersection or interchange at Rutland Downtown Line Road, you know, that might mean that this connection at 51 isn't as suitable any longer.
All the person Boris, why don't you have your hand up?
I think, I think Rodney answered my question, kind of, and that is, what's anticipated for this particular development, is it going to be business, or would be residential, or both, or mixed-use, or, or more senior centers, or, I mean, more senior facilities, or what?
We, we haven't had any development concept conversations with the developer, the comprehensive plan does call for the majority of this to be potentially mixed-use type development, allowing a range of housing and/or commercial or institutional uses, but those, those uses will be defined as.
Could I ask a question, you probably know it too, is, why is Velkman Way so crazy? It doesn't go through, what, what's the history on that, do you know?
I wasn't here when it was created, but certainly, there's been, for those of you that have driven Velkman Way, back in here, it is, it's a town, rural, cross-section, curvy, hilly. There was concern by the town about connection of those streets to the city, and concern about city cut-through traffic, so the city entered in an agreement that made the Barberry Road discontinuous, so that wouldn't be connected and opened up to the city at any point.
And are we obligated by that contingency from the past?
We, we currently certainly are adhering to that. I don't know that development in this area would, would change that.
It's just a very strange street, and, and, because it's not connected to anything, it's like a street that goes nowhere, and, and stops, stops where you would not expect it to stop, and are we going to have control over that street then? Because of the annex?
We, we would have control over the segment that's within the city limits, and the area to the north is already in the city limits, the Leonard Farm is in the city limits, Velkman Way is in the city limits. That doesn't mean we can isolate them and not have access to that area. It doesn't mean we can isolate them and not have access to that area.
Go ahead, Matt.
Do we know how the land is zoned today under county zoning?
Ag, I believe, I
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's rural.
I'm pretty certain it's ag-exclusive, I believe, right now. Ag one, yeah, that's what I thought.
All right, Alder Person Hirsch?
In our comp plan, what is it, what is it expected to be zoned? Is that mixed use?
Plan mixed use is the generalized land use designation, which has an opportunity for a fairly wide range of land use zoning classifications.
So what would typically happen? Let's say we get through the annexation, they have to get, you know, sewer and water out there at some point, so you have to do the urban services. Then would it be like a neighborhood plan or what would be?
Ultimately, there's going to be a process to go through for them to work with the community on, on a development concept and plan. There's an actual plating process, as you mentioned, there's urban service or amendment that would have to take place if the extension is sewer and public services are expected to this area. So there's a number of development steps would have to go through before it could be developed.
And all of those, do those go to the Planning Commission or the council or both?
Almost all of them do both.
And the, to the extent the concern is land use, the ultimate decision will be a zoning decision made by the council.
Right.
Have President Mieski and then Boris.
By accepting this annexation, do we effectively create an island of the town of Dunkirk? And so is that, are we allowed to do that by statute?
We are. The DOA in the package, the Department of Administration actually makes a ruling. They found it to be in the public interest. In essence, what they're saying is these town of Dunkirk properties were all, if you will, isolated from Dunkirk proper anyhow. So it doesn't further exacerbate that issue. So they found it is in the public interest to allow this annexation to occur.
All right, thank you.
Alder Person Boris.
I just wanted one more thing about Velkman Way that in my, in the Norwegian part of this, it doesn't seem very welcoming. And I'm sitting next to Caravella who said he was going to hit me if I said one more thing.
We don't endorse that in the council chambers. This is a no-hit zone. Okay, Alder Person Wiesinger?
I understand this conversation isn't about development right now, but I would say that as this moves forward, because off of Velkman Way where the Eggleson's Woods used to be, that's been like clear-cut basically. And so this will be a point of contention in our community as we develop it, because people were very upset about that. And so people are going to have a vested interest in what happens to the landscape within the area that we're annexing, so I think it's something to be aware of as we move forward.
Thank you.
I think it's noteworthy to point out, the area that was clear-cut was not part of the Eggleson's Woods subdivision. We all drove by there and saw the sign out here that said Eggleson's Woods, but this was part of the Grand Root Farm. The platted area here represents the Eggleson's Woods development. I'm not saying that doesn't, the landscape changed from what we'd been familiar with out there, but Eggleson's Woods proper was the platted area and likely included the right-of-way as well, but the development area here is Eggleson's Woods.
Alder Person Hirsch?
And Rodney, you know this, because I think when we were working on the comprehensive plan, I brought a map to you saying that the community of where Alder Person Wiesinger is talking about really wanted that protected into parkland. And I guess at that time, we were told not to put that in the comprehensive plan for a future parkland. And now I understand, you know, because it's clear-cut, I can understand why people are upset, because we did come to you, we did try to get it in the comp plan and it was denied at that point. So when I met with you and Tom Lynch at that time, so I, I feel bad for the community because they really did work with us trying to identify that. But I know it's not, we didn't own the land, we couldn't do anything, but it was too bad that it wasn't identified in the comp plan as a potential future park.
It's in the comprehensive plan already as lands that have, if you look at the natural features map, I believe it's map nine, you'll see that those natural features are still there. It's not designated entirely as park. As we discussed, that might not have been necessary or successful in preservation of the trees that were there anyhow, because it wasn't in the city when that was altered. But there certainly is recognition of the soil types and the vegetation types on the natural resources map in the comp plan.
Yeah, I just wish they would have come to us before they tore it down for annexation, that we could have had a little bit more clout in preserving something that the community wanted to preserve. That's all I'm saying, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I know we didn't have really any, would have just been nice, that's all I'm going to say.
All right, so we, we have a motion. Is there any other discussion on this? Otherwise, we're voting on Resolution 170 of 2018. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
One opposed, so that carries. And that takes us to Ordinance 23 of 2018. And this is a first reading, so this came from Planning Commission, which would be Alder Person Bartlett.
Ordinance 23 of 2018, providing for the direct annexation of a portion of the town of Dunkirk, a portion of the town of Rutland to the city of Stone, Dane County, Wisconsin. Planning Commission met last night and voted five to one for recommending approval. Tom Sulzer was the commissioner who voted against. He did not provide reasoning why.
I think it was Phil.
It was actually
Phil, I thought it was Tom.
It was me.
Okay. Well, then you can provide a reason why. If you'd like, you don't have to.
I, when we were looking at the comprehensive plan, I also would have preferred that, that property stayed ag. And I think the, I, there were some, in my mind, there were some flaws to portions of the comprehensive plan of some areas that I should, I would be much more comfortable. And after speaking with some other folks in the community, I think they also would have been more comfortable with some of the areas that were marked as, you know, appropriate for potential development in the future would have been preserved as agricultural or not developable land, so that's why I voted no.
Okay, thank you. Alder Person Jurassic?
Yeah, I have a question, I have several questions on number five, the ward designation. And I think that council will need to maybe address this. I, you know, I want a clear understanding of how we get the senate and assembly districts designated, and they're across from each other on the street, and yet they're different assembly and senate districts.
That would be something that the clerk would be working through?
Let me pull it up here. So the Highway 150, or Highway 51 is where it splits. And there is, so there are different, there are different county supervisory districts?
Yeah, and that's, that's my next question, but if you can answer the, the state senate and assembly first, is it because Highway 51 is the dividing line
Yes.
between the senate district 15 and 16?
Yes, and the reason that we would have to create a new ward is because that doesn't match what is currently to the east of that.
Okay, we'll come to that later. I just, I want to clarify first, the senate and the assembly district. And that's basically, we can't change that because the state legislature has drawn those maps. And even though it's now in, it will, it's, it will now be in the city of Stone, and the city of Stone is actually represented totally by the senate district 16. But because of the way the state, the state legislature has drawn the maps, it has to now be divided until redistricting.
The city is currently represented by two state senate and assembly districts, although right now there are no residents that actually live in those districts. So there are, I believe it's ward, I don't have all the numbers in front of me right now, but there are a couple wards in the city that are represented by different state assembly and state senate districts, but there are no voters there right now.
Okay, so we can't, we can't change it just because it's now Stone?
That's correct.
Right, and the census is in 2020, so I would imagine that that would be something that would be examined that
Yeah, it will be. So now my next question is the county supervisor district. I served on the county board at that time, and so I was intimately involved in the redistricting, because the county redistricts the supervisory districts. And so the intent by the county board was to have Stone be represented by one county board supervisor. And I see that that is not the case. And so
Is that something we have to resolve now?
Well
As it relates to, I mean, we're doing a first reading.
Well, that's why I'm bringing it up, so that we can resolve it by the time we get to the second reading.
We can't resolve it. That is a county issue.
It's a county, yeah.
Okay, so that's my question. If it's a county issue then, then what we have in the ordinance is incorrect, because Rutland and Dunkirk are both represented by the county supervisor district 37. And you have one, you have the Rutland in 37, and you have the Dunkirk in 35. And county supervisor district 35 is actually Stone.
I think this is something that I can talk to the county with about, and if there is an error there, we can fix it before the second reading. But I know that there is a small portion surrounding Stone that is county district 35, and it's the way that the county drew the lines. It's not anything that we can
I went and I looked at the map, and the map showed only Stone in county supervisor district 35.
When was the map drawn?
When it was redistricted.
So we'll look at
Well, that's something I can look into and confront with the county and the election commission.
Then the next thing is, why do we have the town of Dunkirk? And we need the map up there. The portion of Dunkirk, okay, the portion of Dunkirk, why is this Aldermanic District two when it's surrounded by Aldermanic District four?
It's Aldermanic District two for Dunkirk, I think, not for
Well, be the city owned.
No, this, this is our Aldermanic district.
Right, and that's something that maybe we can talk to the county about right now. Wards 12, 13, 14 are part of District two. And maybe that they need to be added to District four? I'm not sure, we can clarify that with the county.
Because, because that makes absolutely no sense, because District two is on the east side.
Sorry.
And District four is northwest. And so that has to be cleared up before we approve this. Okay? You know, I, I'm sorry, but it's, I think it's important to have the ordinances be correct the first time around, so. And that's why I'm bringing it up now rather than when we, we vote on it for the second reading. So those were my concerns. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have anything? This is a first reading, and it'll be coming back for a second reading. I don't know how time-sensitive this is, so can you, if we can't get the questions answered in two weeks, is that going to be an issue?
We'll get it figured out.
Okay.
Well, the reason I, the reason I highlight that is because the agreement you just passed on the item before says that if the annexation ordinance isn't passed by, I think it was the 23rd of October, that agreement is null and void. So our hope would be as if we can resolve this beforehand, you'd at least be able to take action one way or the other on the annexation ordinance.
Okay, all right, perfect. Okay, next item, Resolution 171 of 2018, and that comes from the Finance Committee, which met tonight.
Okay.
Alder Person Jurassic?
Yeah, the Finance Committee met this evening and recommends Resolution 171 2018 approving a financial agreement between the state of Wisconsin and the city of Stone for costs for road improvements to U.S. Highway 51 from Page Street to Hole Avenue, currently scheduled to be constructed in 2020. And I so moved, and of course Rodney is here to answer any of your questions.
Second.
And a second by Johnson. And, go ahead Rodney.
Question first, or?
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Question first is, is that Finance looked at this tonight?
Yep.
What is the hurry? Why are we, why are we shoving this through tonight?
Actually, this is a, we already have an agreement on this project with the DOT. This is a refinement of the project, and now that we understand the scope more accurately, there's interest by the DOT to make sure that this MOA is in place prior to the first of the year, to keep this thing under the current standards for this project and funding, funding for this project. That's the only reason it's before us tonight, in the same night as the Finance Committee. Otherwise, we wouldn't have brought it here tonight.
We're trying to accommodate the DOT.
I understand that, but it's the first of the year. This is, what, October? I, I generally do not like
I understood, I get it.
Finance Committee does this all the time, where they, they're voting on something and the night that we're having it at council, I've said this before, this is not, this is not good management of, of ordinances and/or actions that are, that are taken by this committee, by this council. Nobody has a chance to really look at this otherwise, to regurgitate on it, think about it, if they want to, or ask questions to staff. It's slam-bam, thank you ma'am. We've had this done in the past to us all the time. It finally slowed down, and now it's starting up again, and I do not want to see it.
Well, I'll just comment to that. I would say this is an anomaly. We've, Staff and I have made a really concerted effort to address the concerns you're raising, because I raised the same concerns when I was on the city council. And on this particular one, like I said, it's an anomaly. This isn't going to be how we're going to do things going forward. And we're trying to keep the DOT on their timetable so we can get this work done. We'd hate to see them delay the project going from Page Street out to Hole Avenue, because that road is in desperate need. And we certainly don't want to give them a reason to push it back a year. So I don't know if that's an acceptable, acceptable response, but that's the only thing I can really tell you at this point, is we're trying to keep this project on schedule. Alder Person Hirsch?
Rodney, did I miss it? Wasn't, weren't we supposed to have like a roundabout at Hole? And how come that, is that included in here or?
Excellent segue, though.
Yes.
There is going to be a roundabout at Hole. There's going to be a roundabout at 138 West and a roundabout at Robey Road. All three of those are scheduled to be installed in 2021. This project goes from Page Street up to the point at which the roundabout would be installed at Hole Avenue.
Okay. It's too bad they can't do that at that time.
Well, we talked to them about that. We met the DOT a couple weeks ago, and we had Planning Department, we had Public Works, we had Utilities, we were well-represented in the room. And we kind of asked these questions, because what we learned is this is a maintenance program, so they have one team that has their own budget, their own people that do maintenance. They have another team that does reconstruction. They have another team that does safety. You know, the railroad, the corridor to McFarland is another team that works on that. So what we're trying to do is align, help them align the stars so we can keep all these projects going in the current schedule. So at the end of 2021, we'll, we'll have a better and safer stretch of road going out to Robey Road. So, and this is part of the process, is we're kind of at their mercy. And I'll tell you that Staff really did a nice job of working with the DOT to bring us what I think is a much improved plan.
No, I appreciate it. I just frustrated with the DOT for, they should have you as their lead, as somebody that's on efficiencies. They should all be working together to one big project.
I'll tell you, I did get a, a follow-up phone call from them the next day regarding the McFarland project, so they are communicating, so I think that's encouraging. In the past, I don't know if that was really occurring, so I'll, I'll give them credit for that.
No, I'm not saying it, not, I'm just saying I wish within them that they would work together as a team to...
I, I think they are, but they all have their own responsibilities, so I get that too. So, we're just trying to keep things moving. So, I have Alderperson Caravelo, and then Wiesinger.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Is the, the design and plan for this project, I mean, is it, is there, there's a solid design and plan for this project that the DOT has? Like, what's going to be where as far as pedestrian crossings, or any enhancements, or anything like that on this section?
It's evolving. There is going to be a public informational meeting that you'll be invited to, to participate in that, but this is really a pavement rehabilitation project, not to discount the pedestrian concerns and things we've highlighted as well, but it's really pavement replacement of the asphalt from Page Street to Van Buren, and then concrete crack filling and repair work from there to Hole, with an asphalt overlay of that concrete at the, at the outset of that project.
Okay. And what's the timeframe for that?
Twenty twenty.
The public input meeting?
The, the, the public informational meeting, we believe, is going to be in November of this year.
Okay.
More information to come.
So, you'll have the opportunity to ask them the same questions and express your same concerns that you are here tonight, so I'm sure they'll look forward to that. Alderperson Weesinger?
Oh, well, I think this is great. I was just going to make mention that we should probably be mindful of Seton and Mye, so if it falls in May, just giving them a heads up, or, you know, that kind of thing.
Asked and answered.
Yeah.
Very, very good point, but that's already been communicated. Their plan is to start this in June of 2020.
Yep, they have another project, I think, in Oregon or somewhere, and it will be scheduled after that, so we did have that conversation as well. And that was, you know, part of the reason why we brought people in from multiple departments to make sure that we covered all of our bases, you know, from our end of the discussion. I wish we could have just done it a couple weeks sooner, so we didn't have to vote on it tonight. Any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that carries, thank you. Resolution 172 of 2018 comes from Public Safety, Alderperson Jensen.
I think, Your Honor, R. 172, 2018, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to appoint Carl Weirig as agent for QuickTrip number 738, located at 1231 East Main Street. Now, I would so move.
Second. There's a motion, a second by O'Connor, and somebody asked me a question, and I don't remember, and I'm going to ask the chief to answer it better than I can, and the question is, what does it mean to be the agent?
Well, technically, you're the licensee, and Holly can probably answer that one for you too, but it, you are the licensee for the business as the agent. You have all the rights and responsibilities of, of the license holder.
You think...
Is that close enough, Matt?
That's exactly right.
I'm reading something. What was that?
I said they have all the rights and responsibilities of, of a liquor license, as far as the agent
goes. The agent just represents the, a business entity, but they are the license holder for that.
Agent is, is legally responsible for compliance with the law.
Correct.
Okay. Said it much better than I did, but I think I got my point across, so, thanks for that. Any questions on this one? Alderperson Hirsch.
There wasn't any, Chief Luck, there wasn't any concerns? I mean, I didn't see any in the paperwork, but...
No, none whatsoever.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, thank you. Resolution 173, 2018, also comes from Public Safety, Alderperson Jensen.
I think, Your Honor, R. 173, 2018, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to appoint Jack, Jack Woolen Schaefer, that's with two S, not three, as an agent for Walgreens, number 07519, located at 1705 U.S. Highway 51, and I would so move.
Second. A second by Riley.
With the correction to the triple F.
Okay. Any discussion on this one from anybody?
Same question to Chief Luck, any concerns?
Same answer, no, no concerns.
All right. Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Resolution 174, 2018, also comes from Public Safety, Alderperson Jensen.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. R. 174, 2018, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to designate Vernon Street as a through street, and I would so move.
Second. Second by O'Connor. Any discussions?
The reason for this is that by designating Vernon as a through street, it would simplify the process of adding stop signs on the intersections, rather than having to go through in the process for each one of those stop signs for each intersection. Get that correct?
Absolutely correct.
Perfect.
So, right now, there, there's no stop signs?
There's only one on Franklin.
Yeah, there's one stop sign, there's several yield, yield signs, and this came to us as a request from Public Works when they redid the street and, and looking at it. It is a east-west feeder, so we thought the best, the way to do this was to designate it as a through street, which automatically makes all cross traffic to be stop signed.
Okay. Alderperson Hirsch?
So, if it's a through street, so nobody going on Vernon has to stop?
No.
It's only the cross streets?
No, it, that doesn't, any stop signs on a through street can still be established, but what a through street does is establish that all cross traffic for that through street is stopped. So, there's nothing in a, a through street designation that would prevent somebody from putting a stop sign at Morrison Vernon, or something like that. But that's not what the request is here. The request is just to designate it as a through street, so that we can get all cross traffic stopped.
Okay, I'm just, I guess I'm still trying to figure out, so I, I just don't want Vernon, that people traveling in Vernon should have to stop at different cross sections always?
Yeah.
I think you're going to end up with people using it as a, a speed place to get through that neighborhood quickly, if they don't have to stop at stop signs.
Well...
It's the only thing I'm thinking about.
Currently, there are no stop signs on Vernon Street between Academy and Veterans.
Okay.
There are no stop signs now, so there, that, there's no change being proposed to that. That would still remain. But again, I, there were some dead-end street, one-block streets that were attached to Vernon that we felt that it would be better to have those stop sign controlled, along with the other feeder streets that are there. So, the, the designation, I mean, we can always revisit if sometime in the future, somebody deems that there's a stop sign warranted someplace on that street, that can still be done. Similar example of that would be Milwaukee and Hole. That's a four-way stop, and both Milwaukee Street and Hole Avenue are both designated through fares.
There's a map up there on the board now, so...
Yeah, if, if I could...
Yeah, go ahead.
Vernon is, is quite unique, because there, as you can see, all the way through to Veterans Road, there is only one four-way cross, and that's on Franklin. The rest of them are all Ts.
So, at the Ts, you're proposing stop signs and...
Nope.
No?
No, it's already, those, those signs are already in. Basically, what this does is it puts stop signs at all the other cross streets that come in there, and, and butt streets that come into a T.
Okay.
The other advantage of Vernon is, is that because of the Henry Street jog, it has a kind of a natural traffic calming effect, so it's one of those areas that works out really well.
Any more questions or comments on that one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Number 14 is discussion and possible action regarding appointing a council member to the ad hoc school district, Stoughton City Council and Stoughton Chamber of Commerce Committee. Alderperson Boersma?
Um, yeah, we have been meeting now for the last number of months. On Monday night, that question came up, so we've been having Monday night meetings. We've had faithfully representing us is Nicole and Regina, myself. Regina can no longer serve on that committee, and we're, we would be asking that another alder from council be appointed to, to that committee. The, the concern that we have is that there are, there are three school board members and three members of the council to do, to do some planning as to, the question as to what attracts and what, and what, what keeps young families in the city, and we're planning a fairly comprehensive study on that, and we're trying to figure out what's going to happen with that. But I, we, we really need another alder on that committee to represent us fully, 3-3. And if there are further, you know, if there are questions, that would be fine, but I, I would, I would move that Alder Riley be appointed by the mayor to that committee, ad hoc committee, and that, that we as a council support that appointment.
Okay. Before we do that, I don't, it's not really a mayor's appointment, from what I recollect. Those are nice. So, and I don't know if, if Alderperson Riley is willing to enable...
I talked to him briefly, and the issue was, we really could use him with his legal expertise.
So, at this point, I think I would turn it over to President Mijaski and let him speak to it, because it's not really a mayor's appointment.
We started this at the beginning of the term, for better lack of description. I had asked the three alders that are sitting on that, on that committee to, to sit on that committee, and they all said yes, and I made that decision by myself, when I, when I did that originally. If Alder Riley is willing and would enjoy doing that, then I would be more than happy to support that, unless there's somebody else who wants to jump in.
Can I second? Second that nomination? Arm wrestle?
I'll second it.
I don't think we actually need anything else. Don't really need it, but all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Tim.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for doing that, and thank you Regina for the time you put into it.
Absolutely.
And I know your schedule's gotten really full, so we appreciate you hanging in there as long as you did.
It was a tough decision. It's a great group, and I just am holding too many different directions with all the other committee work, extra committee work.
So, hopefully, Tim, you can get together with Nicole at some point, she can get you up to speed.
Thank you.
When is the next meeting? We saw an email the other day, right?
November, as a whole, because the working group for the study is meeting in October, so I can fill you in on that, too.
Okay. Yeah, if you could send that out.
Yeah.
All right. So, that one's done. Takes us to item number 15.
Jim.
Consideration and possible action...
Thank you.
To direct the city attorney to send a letter to the Department of Natural Resources requesting additional investigation of the extent of contamination at 324 South Water Street site, including contamination extending into the public right-of-way prior to closing the site. So, this is another contamination issue, and I'll let Attorney Dregney lead us through this process.
The city received a notice from an environmental consultant who had been retained by the owner of this site to conduct phase-two environmental site assessment-type work to evaluate the extent of contamination. I think this maybe was the site of a former dry cleaning operation.
Yes.
So, after receiving the notice, we were contacted by city staff and worked with city staff and one of our consultants at Strand to evaluate the environmental assessment work that has been done to date, and to consider what the city's options are. And really, the question, as I understand it, is really limited to whether the city should object with the Department of Natural Resources to the proposed closure of this site at this time. The, I think the recommendation coming from my colleague, who, who does environmental law, and the city's engineering consultant at Strand, is that the city should object and request that further investigation be done to determine the extent of the contamination within the right-of-way. As I understand it, the concern is that it is not possible with the work that's been done to determine what they describe as the horizontal and vertical extent of contamination. And this is a concern for the city, because if the city needs to do work in the public right-of-way in the future, if this site isn't more thoroughly investigated now, that means the city will have to incur the expense of doing that more detailed investigation later to determine what the extent of the contamination is, and to work with the DNR to figure out what, what will be done about it. So, we wanted to just check with the council before doing anything to verify, one way or the other, whether the council wants us to file this objection. From the property owner's standpoint, so as I understand the history of this property, it was in foreclosure, but there was some environmental assessment work done at about, at the time that it was acquired by the current owner. I'm not sure what triggered the need for further work that's been done more recently, but the current owner has had to obviously pay the cost of hiring an environmental consultant to do the work that's been done more recently. If the DNR agrees with the city's request that additional investigation work is necessary, then the current owner will have to shoulder that expense, and will have to have that done. If the DNR doesn't agree with the city's request, it'll, it'll issue a new, no further action letter, meaning the current owner doesn't have to do anything at this time, but exposing the city to have to do some more work later to, to determine what the extent of the contamination is. So, Rodney, is that about right, from your perspective, as far as the history?
Yeah, that's correct. Our, our concern would be that in the event we, and we will have to at some point, do underground work for sanitary sewer water and reconstruction of the street, we'd want to be able to understand what, what contamination efforts would have to be addressed at the time that work could be done.
I'm sorry, I'll just mention that, I guess the information we do have so far includes indication that there are a variety of contaminants at the site described as PAHs, I'm not sure what those are, and VOCs, which are volatile organic chemicals, and PCE, I'm not sure, Rodney probably knows what all that stuff is. Some concerning contaminants coming out of that dry cleaning business, I think, is what, what we're talking about.
So, what we're looking for tonight, maybe...
Yeah, I need to know whether the council wants us to file an objection with the DNR to this closure of this site, and ask that the owner be required to perform additional investigation work, or to not object to the closure of this site.
I move that we object, and everything that you said afterwards.
I second.
All right. There's a motion by Jurancic and a second by Boersma. Any discussion on it, or? Go ahead.
Can you tell me, when was the agenda amended?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, afternoon, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All the person Boersma? My objection, or my, my second, is because I think, I think, I don't want the city to be holding in the bag for this, and, and, you know, now or in the future, we might as well take care of it now.
And I think the reason we had to amend the agenda is, there's some time limit or something, and...
We're operating under a deadline to file an objection, and time is running out.
Yeah, so that's why we had short notice, and we didn't know that on Friday, that we were going to have to do this, so we got it out as soon as we had the information together to put in the packet. So, I apologize for that, but kind of beyond our control. I mean, we don't want to miss the deadline. Any other, Alderperson Reese?
Well, I was going to say, I'm actually glad this came out, because I think that this was mentioned in either the phase, was it mentioned in phase one of the, they mentioned this property, I think, as in phase one...
was it mentioned in Phase One of the, they mentioned this property, I think, as in Phase One. Granted, it didn't affect the McFarland Bank, but this particular property was mentioned, I thought.
I'm not remembering. It might have been. I...
Or maybe, well, maybe that was another one. But anyway, so, yeah, I would agree, we need to, we want to object, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we do have a motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? One abstention? Okay. Did you get all that? All right, that takes us to item 16. Discussion and possible action regarding an agreement with TDS Metrocom LLC. We can give you a little bit of background, and then you can decide if you want to go into closed session. So, basically, we were approached by them to enter into an agreement to potentially do some fiber work throughout the city. And we have a proposal, and that's what we want to talk about in closed session, because it is a negotiated item.
I just wanted to point out to Tom that this did not come to finance, even though it does have financial implications. So, it did not come here from finance.
It can still go to finance.
That's quite all right, but it should have gone to finance, though. I move that we go into closed session as State Statute 19.85, Prens I, Prens E, and I request in the future that we also have all the verbal verbiage that goes with it, so that I can read that, so that the public knows why we're going into closed session.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on going into closed session? That needs a roll call, roll call. And then, after we vote, if we go into closed session, we can take a short recess. Are you ready?
Can I just clarify?
Sure.
My second was for Denise's motion to go into closed session and not her second point, so I...
Okay, well, that second point wasn't a motion. It was just a point.
Just want to clarify.
Yeah, a legitimate one.
Not that I don't agree, but it's just, you know, I don't know that we can handle both in the same motion.
Okay. Are you ready?
Yes, Riley.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Mijesci.
Aye.
Caravelo.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Weisinger.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Duransek.
Aye.
Bartlet.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
All right, we'll take a short recess, and then we'll go into closed session.